Motion second and I'll in favor.
I.
Opposed abstain motion carries. We are back into open session. At this time, please stand for the budget.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple presentations tonight. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Mr. Loanich.
Thank you. As Mr. Kuchy said, we have a couple presentations. One of them will be we're gathering some student artwork. And we'll do that first. And then we have, we're going to recognize some of our students who partook in the Skills USA competition. What I'll ask is at the end of those two presentations, there's some cookies, some drinks. We'll take a short little recess. So we can take a look at the artwork and also congratulate our students that are here tonight. Okay. So why don't we start with Lisa Pavlik, one of our teachers, and she's going to present a little bit to us tonight.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I wanted to proudly present art appreciations artwork for our spring art show. Art appreciation students in Mr. Azarela's and Ms. Dixon's classes have been creating amazing artwork all year long. Inspired by a variety of famous artists by focusing on a big idea of introducing me to art. Students have been creating through the lenses of play and abstract. By doing so, we have been able to create masterpieces that focus on the ideas, skills and techniques behind the artworks that we learn about. Thank you so much.
Listen, thank you. And when we walk around, I'm sure you can kind of give us a little more follow-ups once we get a chance here. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, I'm gonna come out there with Mr. Kuchy. They don't break this. Thanks. For those who don't know, our district is incredibly fortunate to be part of Orleans Niagara Bosse's. The Orleans Niagara Bosse's program supports many of our students in their decisions to to work in some college and career writing programs. Our students have found incredible success in those programs. And I know I've asked for some of you, and I apologize. But we're so fortunate to have Bosse's right down the road. A large segment of our student population, especially our seniors and seniors, take part in those programs. And our kids do exceptionally well in those programs and very often find their niche and find a program that they want to be in for the rest of their lives, which is which is so important. So we actually have two students who are going to honor here tonight. The first one is Tyler Uchison. If you could just stand for a minute there, okay, stay right there. Okay. Right now, you're going to receive a certificate from us and then behalf of the Board of Education. It says, whereas the philosophy of education of the Niagara Weefield Central School District calls for aiding all students in development and achievement of their potential. And whereas the primary goals of the school district include encouraging each student to develop a sense of values. Instill a feeling of responsibility to self and to others, as well as an appreciation of good citizenship. Being resolved, the Board of Education of the Niagara Weefield Central School District hereby recognizes the following student Tyler Uchison. For being selected as a second place winner in the Area One Regional Skills USA Competition for Carpentry. At the Niagara Career and Technical Education Center. I'm going to give this to Mr. Kuchy and he can come up here and he's going to hand it to you. Okay. I was just gonna talk just for a minute about the the competition that.
So when I did the competition, I was in a room around fifty to seventy-five other people. And we were given a blueprint and we were told to build that. And we had to build a wall with a window in it and we had to do a hinge chain and lay out a rack.
Did you have any notice out of time of what that project was going to be or did you just walk into it blind?
We just walked in.
Wow, that's amazing. Well, you know, one of the things I want to say is this, it's amazing because the Career and Technical Education Program doesn't just teach the skills of, in your case, carpentry, correct? But it teaches what was just done here. And that's the public speaking and you have to talk about those things, right? Talking with your teachers, you're talking to the president. And I'm so impressed with how students come back to us another junior, senior year and are able to do spontaneously what was just done here tonight. So great job. Congratulations. And next, we have Lenora Mercario. Again, a certificate for you and it says, whereas the philosophy of education of the Niagara Weefield Central School District calls for aiding all students in development and achievement of their potential. And whereas the primary goals of the school district include encouraging each student to develop a sense of values. Instill a feeling of responsibility to self and others, as well as an appreciation of good citizenship. Be resolved that the Board of Education, the Niagara Weefield Central School District hereby recognizes the following student. Lenora Mercario for being selected as the second place winner in the Area One Regional Skills USA Competition. For the Fashion Design and Interior Decorating Program at the Niagara Career and Technical Education Center. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Look, look, right to the mic. Awesome.
Um, okay, so what I did was a job demonstration. I did painting customized shoes. So I painted Marvel themed shoes for my little brother on Air Force Ones. And I had a five minute demonstration on explaining how to customize your shoes. And I had to demonstrate how to actually paint them too in front of the judges and I had three judges. So.
You still want to do some how carpentry work around the house and then somebody do the interior design. You're all set, right? Congratulations to all students. So can we take a few minutes now? Okay, great. About ten minute recess? So we can take a look at the artwork. There's cookies. There's water. And then we'll get back to our.
They're back from our recognitions and we will move on to privilege from the floor. We do not have anybody for privilege of the floor, so we'll move on to consensus agenda items. Uh, we have agenda items one through seven. We're going to separate number three. So I need somebody to make a motion.
So move second.
Okay, any items for for discussion? If not, we'll move for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and abstain items one through seven separating number three. Okay, item number three is the adopter refunding bond resolution. This will be a roll call vote. Very free refunding bond bond resolution of the Niagara Weefield Central School District, New York adopted April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Authorizing the refunding of all or a portion of certain outstanding serial bonds of set district. Stating the plan of refunding appropriating an amount not to exceed one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars refunding serial bonds of the district. To finance set appropriation and making certain other determinations all relative thereto. This item requires a roll call vote.
And did you?
Yes.
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 Here. Moving on to personnel items. I'll call for a motion to approve personnel items two through ten. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstaining items pass backing up to item number one. Go to Mr. Loanich.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to recommend to you tonight. Lisa Kinkelinski has our next French teacher, one point O F T E for the senior high school. She comes to our district with a vast amount of teaching experience. You know, some of the remarks made about her was how much she just cares about kids. The the amount of time that she spends with kids outside of the classroom, making connections, building relationships. Those are all some of the things that that ended up filtered to me. I will tell you that French teachers are incredibly hard to find. And I think you're very, very, very fortunate to find this one. So we, I am very happy to be able to recommend you tonight to the Board of Education. And we're happy to have an opportunity to join our team here in Niagara Weefield.
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion for approval for personnel item number one for the appointment of making a motion. The second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed abstains. Congratulations.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
What would you say? Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yes. Congratulations.
Okay, moving on. We don't have any committee reports. No external communications and we do not have our ex officio board member with us this evening. So we'll go to the president's report. And a couple items I was just going to cast out there, just a reminder, and I know will be more published. Published and more information coming about the budget vote on Tuesday, May seventeenth, and encourage everybody to get out in both. Spring sports are in session. I know they've been dodging weather and hopefully things are going to break in with turf fields. They should have ample opportunity to play. So go out there and support the spring sports and our student athletes and whatever other festive festive. We have coming up in the spring, like we're going to concerts and other programs. I'm sure Dan will get into that. So that's all I had to say. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First, I want to make mention of the New York State budget and the New York State budget. Legislative budget, executive budget, when they combined, when they made our final budget. There was really good news for schools that are for native schools on native lands. As you all know, we were really pushing for the improvements that are necessary for Tusker Elementary School for the building there. And all of the funding that we had requested has been approved. It was just such a concerted effort between the three districts who were impacted. The our our native communities, the legislators who got behind this. There was just so much support in New York State for this. I didn't come across one person who said no to this. Couldn't understand why it was so necessary. So to all those, we've already sent out some letters thanking people who were part of this. But I want to say thank you. And I just want to add one piece. Starting next year, okay, we're really going to start in the budget process pushing to make sure that there's a larger amount in the annual budget to pay for improvements to these schools moving forward. So we don't end up in a place where our native schools and all of the other schools that New York State is responsible for, the school buildings that they're responsible for, that they're not shorted when it comes to improvements. Okay, so our goal will be to really push New York State next year to increase that budget line. So that it's healthy enough to support continued improvements so that we're not in a position where bricks are literally falling out of our building. Remember again, New York State pays for that building. We don't, we can't do a capital project that building. Okay, New York State is responsible. So there were a lot of people who were a big part of that. I just thank all of them for the role that they played in making sure that that happened. We have some events coming up, all falling under CDEP or CDEP. But our comprehensive district educational planning team has really, over the last handful of years, really focused on engagement. And on April thirtieth, we have our Eco Campus Revitalization Project right here outside the high school. We will be planting trees, taking out some dead trees, cleaning up some beds, mulching, putting down millings. So there'll be a lot of work to do for for all the people involved. It'll be from eight to eleven o'clock that morning. It's rain or shine. Later on that day, about a half an hour later at eleven thirty, there is a family wellness activity. Little less from eleven thirty to one. It's sponsored by the National Junior Honor Society and the National Honor Society. It's a walk around the campus to raise money for suicide prevention. And then on May twentieth, the last event sponsored by CDEP is the Family Movie Night. That's for elementary students and their families. It'll be back on Terry Harvey Field. They we set up an outdoor video screen. There'll be a movie popcorn, water. That's all provided by by the district and that'll start at eight forty-five P M on May twentieth. So some pretty neat events coming up that we're excited about. I'm hoping for a lot of participation and please make sure your children participate. And oh, and one thing I want to say about the Eco Campus Revitalization Project. That project, we encourage families certainly to come take part. We have some of our service organizations in the community who come and take part. There'll be members of the Greenway Commission who come and take part. So it's a it's truly a community event. And last but not least, food service free. Food is free until June thirtieth in our district. Breakfast and lunches. There has been no movement on extending that beyond June thirtieth. So until June thirtieth, those meals are free for all of our students. I do want to say this, one of the things we are working on for our summer program, even if this food program ends. Through the county, like we did last summer, we worked with the youth bureau and were able to, the youth bureau, NARCA Youth Bureau actually provided meals in the summer for our students who part who took part in the summer program. So we're looking to partner with them again this year. Okay. That's all.
Yeah, just a question on the grab and go for underneath the bridge. Do they come in ahead of time or do we just are we just sitting underneath there waiting for someone to pick it up? I mean, do they kind of reserve? I mean, do they kind of reserve a lunch and they come?
Are you talking about right now?
Well, I know the grab and go can pick up under the bridge now.
Oh, oh, for students, for, 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 for students who are, that's for students that they're not in attendance.
Yes.
They could do that. Sure they could. They'd have to make, they'd have to call.
They call.
If they're our kids, yeah, yeah. I think they're, with everybody back really at school now, there's a lot less of that, but it's still a possibility.
I was just curious.
Yeah. Yeah.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Okay, all right, moving on to reports to the board, finance. Presentation.
No, we, we don't, there's nothing new for us with regard to the budget presentation, so we do, we will have our final budget presentation coming up here soon, but nothing new. We finalized everything at the last meeting. We had left that on just in case at this meeting, we were still in a position where we needed to talk about either the expenditure budget or the, or the lobby. Is that on there though?
Yeah.
But that's under new business, right?
It's under finance. That's adoption of property tax report card.
There it is. I thought we, I thought we put it under business. Okay.
Okay. Adoption of the property tax report card resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent to the Board of Education adopt the property tax report card as submitted. Look for somebody to make a motion.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain is adopted as submitted. Budget update. Any items for board discussion? Old business, no old business, new business. With the annual election of members of the Orleans Niagara Board of Cooperative Educational Services. There is a ballot that must be completed. I'll read this to you. There are four vacancies for the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, Board of Education, to be filled at the annual election to be held on April 26th, 2022. Trustees or Board of Education of each component school district by resolution may cast one vote for each vacancy to be filled, provided that no more than one vote be cast for any candidate. No one, no more than one person residing in a particular component school district may be elected to serve on the Board of Cooperative Educational Services at one time, except as provided under educational law. And the district clerk or other officer will be authorized to certify the board resolution has been adopted. We have four candidates for four vacancies. The first one is Vincent Consomme from Niagara Falls School District. The second is Timothy Crew from Wilson. Number three is Robert McDermott from Niagara Weefield, and number four, Colleen Osborne from North Tonawanda City School District. So I would ask somebody to make a motion to cast a ballot, one ballot for each of those positions. Okay, need a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor of casting one vote for those four, Vincent Consomme, Timothy Crew, Robert McDermott, and Colleen Osborne? Please respond by saying aye. Opposed? Abstaining? It is removed, carried. Good work, Bob. No.
Thanks for doing this.
All right. Okay. All right, any board member comments for this evening?
Hope we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is it on? It's not on your paper? Copy there? You can use that.
Yeah, I got it here.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Action resolved. The Board of Education of the Niagara Weefield School District hereby approves a proposed administrative budget for the Orleans Niagara Board of Cooperative Educational Services in the amount of $2,957,989. I look for a motion to approve that budget. Motion been made. Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we pass. Moved along. All right. All right, so board member comments, any comments from the board? And I think.
Yeah.
I just want to congratulate Lisa. This is Kinkelinski on your meeting position.
I'd like to congratulate you as well. I know I took French in high school. It's a tough, tough language to learn. First, congratulations. Welcome aboard. I want to congratulate our two skill competition winners. It's nice to see that we, we get, that we have these kids from OCs that go to OCs that really get recognized. It's really nice to see. Oh, yeah, as far as we're talking about the money that was, we were able to get for the Indian reservation in our school. Dan, I would thank you. I know I attended a couple of meetings and you and the other two superintendents to bang up job to get this done for them. I really think that's great. The school is definitely in disrepair, and it's nice to see that that's done.
Big group effort, but thanks, Bob.
Again, welcome Lisa from Niagara Weefield. I know that, and again, piggybacking on what Bob said, the OC students that were here, we took a tour last month.
Yeah.
And we saw some of these, some of our own students in action, and it was, these, these kids are written up these programs. I mean, they're just, I think every classroom we went into, the instructor asked them, you'd rather be back at your homeschool or here? And they're, oh, here, you know? So that, I mean, they're, they've definitely bought into the programs and, you know, hats off to the instructors that have gotten the kids to, you know, buy into these, the different trades and skills. And as we saw this evening with our two students, I know one was kind of put on the spot there, but he, he came through okay.
Did great.
So, yeah, all good. So at this point, I will look for, make motion to adjourn meeting.
So move.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have adjourned.